Call the meeting to order. If you have a follow, we thank you for this day in the city in which we live, guidance this afternoon as we make our decisions. This is the November tenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Newnan City Council. We have the minutes from the regular meeting, October the twenty seventh before you all entertain a motion to adopt this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the minutes as presented, any discussions?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes.
Uh, one, one change on the minutes for the last meeting, uh, when we approved for the storage units, I approved the acceptance of the minutes for the funding mission, but the following two, uh, I was against. I think you only had me one.
Okay, so who made the motion to approve?
I made it.
Okay, we need a motion to approve.
I think Mr. Devos did.
Approve, I make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion is second to approve is amended, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda today are the reports from boards and commissions, uh, the annual report from the urban redevelopment agency is, uh, in your agenda, and this is for information only. Uh, the next item, uh, on the agenda today then is one appointment to the Newnan Youth Activities, uh, and I believe Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Cricko, yes, has that.
For the youth activities, uh, next commission please, or next, uh, council people please.
Alright, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, one appointment to the Ethics Commission, Ms. Jenkins.
I'll need that on the next agenda, please.
Thank you. The next appointment is on the Farmer Street, there are two of those, the first one's mine, I'll need that on the next agenda, and then Mr. Cricko.
Next agenda as well, please.
Okay, thank you. As you all know, uh, I, I asked council, uh, to consider the resignation letter, um, of Katie McBride Newman, uh, that's at your, uh, space today. Uh, she did send in this letter, she had served on the Convention Center Authority for many years, and she has moved outside the city limits of the city of Newnan, so is there a motion that we accept her?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, we accept with regret her letter of resignation, any discussion, all those in favor, opposed, motion carried. She was, uh, my appointment, and to replace her, I would like to place the name of John Goodrum.
Second.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, we, uh, asked John Goodrum to take, uh, Katie McBride Newman's place on the Convention Center Authority, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carry, thank you. Um, Ms. Phillips, you have anything today?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything today. Under new business, we have a public hearing application for alcohol beverage license, uh, trice, license transfer, uh, the Juicy Crab at twenty, at eleven twenty Bull'sborough Drive. The reason for this is a personnel change, this is a public hearing on this, ask if there's anyone here to like to come forward to speak to the issue of this alcohol transfer. Are you here to represent? Thank you for being here today. Uh, seeing no one else come forward, I'll close the public hearing at this time, Miss Stella, is everything in order? Alright, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, we approve the application as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next is also a public hearing, this is an application for alcohol beverage license for, for Chilacos, uh, the reason for this is a new owner, this is located at twenty Bull'sborough Drive. This is a public hearing, I would ask if there is someone here, uh, you're representing Chilacos, thank you for being here today. Is anyone here would like to speak for or against this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the hearing and ask, Miss Stella, is everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the application for alcohol beverage license as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next is, uh, from a request from the Calhady County School System for the installation of flashing school beacons at the C E C school on Martin Luther King Junior Drive. I have this request before you, if there aren't any questions of staff, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the request as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next is a consideration of the local maintenance improvement grant, L M I G, uh, for, and list of streets for proposed maintenance is in your agenda, is there a motion we adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the list, the resolution is presented, any discussion or questions of staff? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next is consideration of a resolution approving the issuance of a multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Thomason Housing Authority. If you'll recall, several years ago, we did the same thing, I think through the Baldasta housing authority for, um, the Pines on Herring Road, if I remember correctly.
Herring Road, the Pines by the Creek.
Pines by the Creek, yep.
I remember that.
Uh, so they're coming, this time it's the Thomason Housing Authority, they seem to do these things in bundles to save the, uh, the, the fees, and I can appreciate that. But they're asking for this for the East Gate apartment complex, it's, if this has been in your agenda, you should be able to ask questions on this, and I do have a few. Is there a representative here today, if you'll come forward and introduce yourself to the council, please?
My name is Major Lee, I represent involved communities, uh, I'm the developer on the deal, we've been working on it for the past probably eight months, so I've kind of been touching every aspect of the deal and here to field your questions.
Okay, well, the questions I have aren't, don't necessarily revolve around the renovation itself, even though I'm, after reading the thing, I don't know how you don't move a tenant out to do the kind of renovation you're talking to do, but that's, that's your problem, not mine.
So, to touch on that real quick, we are actually relocating tenants to vacant units, so they will not remain in the, in the unit while renovation is, is complete.
It seemed to sound like the contractor had done this before with a tenant in place and was able to do that again.
Yes, sir, uh, we, D C A, the housing agency, uh, required us to change that plan from what we originally, originally anticipated, so.
Good, that's to the advantage of the tenant, I appreciate that. My real questions, though, revolve around security, several years ago, at East Gate Apartments, we had a company come in that, who owned that facility, and they put in, uh, a, a gate up front, it was secure. Uh, there, there was not just a keypad, but there were people who worked the gate that didn't let anyone in except a resident or a visitor of a resident who was duly, uh, registered with the people at the gate. Uh, is your company willing to do that again? We, we've had several problems over there, one in particular this past weekend, it was a tragic event, and, uh, we'd like to see that curtailed, is your company willing to do that again?
Uh, I know for a fact that we are planning to keep the gate there, um, as it pertains to someone manning the gate, I will have to run that by operations. Um, I couldn't make that kind of promise today, just 'cause I don't really work within the operations department, um, but it's certainly something I can bring up to them if it's important here to, to this committee.
Okay, so, and one thing they also did, I don't know if the fence is still intact or not, but they did totally fence the community. Uh, and there was a mention in the description of the project that the possibility of fencing, but it didn't say fencing for sure, it said possibility. So I'd like to also know that they're willing to do a complete overhaul of the fencing of the property to make sure that the property is secure.
Yes, sir, and we, we actually have that in our scope of work, we have a budget for, um, um, fixing a few parts of the fence that have seen some wear and actually making it better, but the property will retain full fencing around the perimeter.
So how quickly can you give us an answer on security in the gate?
I can touch base with operations, uh, this afternoon, um, I could do it right now. As a note to that same, uh, uh, security, uh, measures, we have installed tag scanners and cameras at the clubhouse, which were not previously there, and we have doubled up on, um, security driving around the property, um, and looking for any suspicious activity, and we have doubled our budget for security for, uh, post rehab. But as it pertains to someone standing at the gate, I'll have to ask our operations folks.
Okay, does anyone else, the staff, recall whether or not it was a manned gate or?
Yes, it was.
It was a manned gate.
It was a manned gate, and not only that, they took your license and verified that you, who you said you were, and they wrote down your tag when you're in and going out.
Right.
Okay.
This is all for the security of the tenants who live there, and it's also a protection of your investment in the property you're about to make.
Yes, sir.
Because nobody wants to live in an area that's not safe, so the units go vacant, and that impacts your investment.
Absolutely.
So, uh, what I'd like to do is ask the councils, um, for permission to allow this young man to go out and make whatever calls he needs to make, let's push this down to the, toward the end of the agenda and carry on with the agenda while he makes those own calls, and then you can come back in and address those, those questions.
Okay.
If that suits you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Let's move on to the next item then, uh, under unfinished business, the second final reading of consideration of an ordinance to amend code of ordinances, chapter five, section five dash twenty-five, demolition, removal, and relocation of structures, this is the second final reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the second final reading of the ordinance to amend the code of ordinance for, set, chapter five, section five twenty-five, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, six one. The next item on the agenda is a second final reading of the rezoning request, R Z twenty twenty dash oh four, Melissa Griffiths on behalf of Turnstone Group LLC for two point seven zero acres located on Diplomat Parkway, parcel number zero nine eight five zero five two zero zero one, from C G N to C H V, condition for climate control, storage units, uh, this is the second final reading, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve on the second final reading, any discussion or questions? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, six one. The next item on the agenda is a summary of findings, uh, and recommendations for designating Wesley Street from Jefferson Street to Jackson Street as one way to mitigate, uh, limited site distances, the intersection of Wesley Street and Jefferson Street. Mr. Clark, how are you today?
I'm doing great, Mayor and council, thank you.
Good.
Um, at the last meeting, this is continued from our last meeting, we went back and, uh, contracted with Wilburn Engineering to, uh, do an overall assessment of what the impact would be if we were to reverse this, uh, street from two-way to one-way, and, uh, the traffic study is in your, in your packet, but essentially he, he showed no adverse impact. The intersections that signaledized and unsignalized remained at level service of C, which is good, D is actually considered good, to be honest with you. So they had no adverse impact, and beyond that, we went on and, uh, showed how we could, uh, add about five more parking spaces along Wesley Street if we, if we decided to go that route.
Questions, council?
Um, I, I had some, um, concerns from the residents that live on Wesley Street and around in that area about, um, the movement to, to go that way, because according to the traffic study, a good bit of traffic comes, relatively speaking, comes from Wesley Street across Jefferson, uh, or Jackson, um, across, um, to, to go out, um, Jefferson Street on thirty-four. Uh, more than that comes the opposite direction. So some of them are concerned that now they're gonna have to start making these, you know, roundabout ways to get there, um, to go out for many of them to work. Um, so I'm, and some of them even ask about Madison Street, because what happens now is you can't take Madison to the light, because Madison's one way behind the church. So they're looking for some relief in that, so that they don't have to go all the way down to Temple and come around the Posey, or down to Wesley and across, because they can't make a straight shot anymore. Um, across, um, Wesley or across Madison.
They could, those people you're talking about can go down to Clark, to Temple Avenue and take a right on Temple, take a right on Jackson and left, or the one way is only portion behind the church, not all of Madison's that way, so you could go around and go up that brown street and turn left on Madison, then go across and Jackson and then to Jackson and turn left.
I'm just telling you that there's some.
I understand, and then some people may be convinced, but that is one of the single hardest places to get out of, when you're on, going east on, uh, West Street, and you try to get out on Jackson, you're taking your life in your own hand, because you can't see.
Well, that was the complaint that started this in the first place, is that, yeah, that's what started, that was the complaint, that there was, um, some dangers there, and what they wanted was the, the mirror, um, replaced. Um, because that was the thing that was helping them make that turn better, but then this ended up going a way they didn't anticipate, which is to just close it all together and then cause them to have to go another route, when there aren't as many straight through routes, um, anymore due to street closings and one-ways and all this other stuff. So that is the concern, and I think that, um, because this is an afternoon meeting, maybe some of them have not had the chance to get here to, um, express their opinions about this.
My concern is, uh, when you're traveling, if we make it one-way, and you're traveling west, and you get to, uh, Jackson Street, you have the same problem now of turning left onto Jackson, and you start, wait, let me finish, please. And you, you, when you try to turn left, you have those cars parked, because it's a commercial area, and you're creating the same problem, and I feel that the amount of complaints or lack of the amount of complaints that we have, uh, keeping it two-way, it's just not that many, the, the accident rate, uh, I, I'm not in favor of the mirror, because I don't think that shows, uh, how fast people are coming, but I, I'm in favor of basically leaving it the way it is, because the safety that you're gonna create going the other way.
Well, you already have that the other way, that's not any change, it's just the only change you have, trying to cross from Wesley across Jackson, and I've seen too many wrecks there, I mean, it happens all the time. The other thing that's, I don't think is brought up too much is the fire truck, when it comes out, that's the way they get out, is out, straight out Wesley, if they're going, uh, south, they go out and hit, turn left on Jackson, go south. So it's, it would help, actually help our fire truck, I would think, coming out of there, just go straight across, instead of having to worry about a car sitting there coming out on the Jefferson. And I wouldn't want to pu, put any parking there, it's a very narrow street anyhow, so I think just leave the parking like it is.
Will this be adding any, any other traffic on any of the other roads, as there, as people are trying to divert around?
Yes.
So now it's gonna cr, create a, like a ripple effect or secondary effect on?
Jefferson.
Jefferson or wherever.
Or Jackson, Jackson.
That was what was addressed in the actual traffic study you asked us to do, so if you take a look at the, and, and they determine the level of services, Mr. Clark said, uh, you know, they give you a letter grade, but if you look at the, the delay time that's in there, it shows you the before and after delay times at those intersections. Uh, and, and it's your, your decision, but those delay time changes were minute, they were very, very, very small, so.
Yeah, I, I just don't.
I just wanna address that, because that's in the actual.
No, absolutely, and you can engineer something, so I, you know, look at it objectively, people will drive however they wanna drive, though.
Remind us again the objection of the, I, Ms. Alexander, I heard what you said about the speed, that the objection of the mirror?
The mirror's just not effective, uh, especially after the fact that we are, we're now gonna have to locate it further away. Uh, it's actually not a, an approved traffic control device, that's why G dot said if you do it, don't install it on the right way, install it so far back that it's set in on our property.
That's right.
It just gives you a false sense of how fast that car is approaching, so it's just not a recommended device.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I understand that, uh, the, uh, intersection was not working properly in Jefferson and Wesley, that was the reason there was discussion for some sort of a change.
Well, but my concern is just, we just don't have that many complaints about it, and I think the accident.
So why, why do we do the exercise then?
Pardon me?
If we didn't have that many complaints, my question would be, why did we do the exercise to begin with?
The complaint, the complaint that was there was not necessarily to get rid of the intersection, it was there to get the traffic device that had been in place before, because there used to be a mirror there, when we did the renovation to the fire station, the mirror was not replaced, so the complaint is to put the mirror back.
So I'm, I'm hearing that the mirror, the mirror's not relevant.
The mirror cannot be put back in the same location, because we actually changed the, the driveway width, the pole that the mirror was on is no longer there. So if we have to put a new pole up, it's going to be in a different position, even further away from the intersection at which it was.
So I'm hearing from you, though, correct?
It's our recommendation that the mirror is not effective.
The mirror, if, I'm not exactly sure, but if you look at the.
Sorry, what now?
The crash history data, Mr. Phillips, do you remember what year we had that mirror up, was that two thousand seventeen or so?
It's been a couple of years since it's been up.
For some reason, the crash data was much higher at that intersection while the mirror was up, so I don't know if that had an impact or not, but.
And it's, it's only a problem when people are eating at that restaurant, but as we get busier with our society somewhat, that restaurant's gonna be busier and busier, and so they're busy during lunch and they're busy in the evening, and that's when you have a problem. In the morning, early in the morning, it's no problem, because you can see there's nobody parked there, but when you're busy times of the day, that's when it's a problem, you just can't get out there without just inching on out. If somebody tries to turn left there, while you've each way out, that's another problem, so it's just a continuous thing, and if you, if you, you're better off not even try that intersection, to tell you the truth, if you haven't tried a few times.
Well, I, and I, you can say the same thing, when you double up going west on, uh, Wesley, both cars trying to make a left turn, they're trying to get out on a Jackson, and they're blocked by the commercial traffic all day along, uh, Jackson Street, so.
But that, but that's not a change from what we have now, so.
Okay, let's try to, if, if we, let's, we'll try to wrap this up, and I'll just ask this question to council, is anyone on council who wants to take action on this item?
Did I make a motion that we approve the change?
I'll second.
Oh, let me hear his motion first, before we second it.
I, I approve the change to that one-way going west.
Okay, there's a motion.
Still second.
And there's a second, okay, alright, any other discussion on this? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion failed, four three, alright, thank you, Mr. Clark. The next item on the agenda today, uh, is a request from Foundation Christian Church to hold a movie event in the Southport Square on December the eleventh, from three, uh, till eleven P M. I've got a couple of questions on this, uh, is there someone here representing Foundation Church? Yes. Yes, sir, if you'll step over and identify yourself for the record, please, I appreciate it. First, let me say we appreciate very much your service to the community and everything you do for us, we appreciate the fact that you're wanting to bring an event to the Court Square, uh, on December the eleventh, from, at three P M. My question, though, is, might there be an alternative site either at Greengill Street or First Avenue, uh, Park? December the eleventh, at three P M, two weeks before Christmas, shopping season downtown for our retail merchants who have been through an awful time this year for obvious reasons. It's difficult for me, I don't know how the others feel about it, it would be difficult for me to say, let's clear out the Southport Square starting for a three, three P M event, so if, if there's another accommodation you can make.
Yes, sir, um, my name's Clint Nolder.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, lead pastor at the foundation, and I appreciate the kind words. So as we were thinking through this, one of the heartbeats of why we wanted to do it was for that very reason, you lose some parking spaces, but we're gonna draw a crowd. And so the whole idea is, how do we give back to the square and to the merchants that are there, and it's bring people, uh, bring people to eat in the restaurants, shop in the stores. And so if we can create an event where normally the parade would bring folks out, fill the restaurants, fill the stores, people would stay up and late, I know we can't do the parade this year, this isn't gonna be near that size, obviously, but it will be a draw. Um, first, I can tell you our people will be there, but more than that, when we do community events, we don't do it for our people. Um, or we tell folks in our church that if you're just bent on getting people to come to church, you've missed the mission of Jesus, and so people are our destination, so how do we go to where people are at? And how do we bring memory-making moments to families in the midst of a Christmas that's fairly unique? I happen to admire what the city of Newnan has done in the square with the lights and just the environment, and I think it's one of the most magical places just in our city. And so I was thinking, man, what's a draw, what's a draw to bring people into the square, uh, to kinda enjoy a very unique moment in Christmas, when they've kinda lost a number of them, that still benefits the stores and squares, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did an event for Good Friday, um, and it rained on us, and even still, we drew over four hundred folks to the square, even in the midst of the rain, uh, they went and supported the businesses, we partnered with local shops for them to stay open late that evening. So I don't, I think, you know, I'd like to put that reputation on the line to say, we'll draw people to support local businesses. Now, that being said, we wanted to do it Friday and Saturday, um, in the square, I know that's not on the motion, and not, not a part of the motion, and so we were willing to just say, hey, we'll, we already have the park locked up, uh, for Greengill Street for Saturday night, I'd love to do it both Friday and Saturday night, we got the Grinch license and Polar Express license, um, covered up to make sure that both of those happens, and whether it's one way or the other, whatever y'all decide, we're gonna say yes to, um, but if we could add value, and you think it could add value, um, I'd love to do that.
Michelle?
Uh, we are still in the middle of a pandemic, are you not concerned about drawing a crowd, because you can look around this room, and a few people have already taken their masks off, and you're sitting there drawing a crowd, and we still have the virus going around, is that not a concern?
Oh, it's a, it's an immense concern, um, and it's.
Y'all require masks, or what do y'all do?
We don't, no, we don't require masks, however, we do require social distancing, so we, we had an event at the park this past Sunday, we called it Election Sunday, and, uh, the, the whole idea, we've been in a series for the last four weeks, that says, hey, we ought to be one, we aren't, but we could be. Um, and it was just, hey, would you bring somebody who's gonna vote differently than you to the place, to the park, and so we had a bunch of folks pack it for eleven and six o'clock, and, uh, as silly as it sounds, we just tried to figure out, how, how do we diffuse the situation? So we bought hundreds of pool noodles, and, uh, and we just said, hey, if you show up, you put a pool noodle on your right, if everybody puts their pool noodle out, don't touch somebody else's pool noodle. And, uh, pool noodles are just over four and a half feet long, so you got about six inches you gotta add on each side or so, and that seemed to have worked in the park. Um, you know, we, we typically do fairly large events, and so far, we haven't, our church hasn't stopped doing anything other than Sunday morning gatherings in this pandemic. Um, we take it very seriously, um, and certainly, when we look at our community, we wanna bring good, not harm to it, so it'll certainly be something that we're taking responsibility for in terms of creating the environment that promotes the social distancing piece of it.
Well, well then, that space, to me, is not as big as that park, maybe it is, but you're, if you talk to concrete sidewalks, the street and the other concrete sidewalk, it's not as quite as big, to me, as it is that park. I mean, my office is right there, I look at it all the time, and it just seemed like that's not, if y'all are successful, it's not a big enough space to keep people spread out.
Yeah, well, so at the park, um, if you measure the square footage in terms of just overwhelming capacity, I get that there's some limitations in terms of where people can go, where that sidewalk begins and the county property ends, and so I, I get there's a little bit of space there that's probably not counted in that, but square footage-wise, it's actually larger.
Okay, so, my question was, are you willing to relocate, I think the answer was yes, um, reluctant? I think the answer was yes, um, reluctantly.
I'll do whatever you tell me to do, but I'd love to at least ask for some kids, consideration that we would be a, a benefit to the merchants if that's the reason we would be asked to relocate.
There's no doubt you will be. I mean, when they have the, the, uh, Jazz in the park, those people, uh, in years past have always gone to the merchants to buy food, to do things, to come and been part of the merchant activity before, before and after they've gone to the Jazz event. So there's no doubt that that will still have a positive impact for me on the, uh, on the merchants downtown. I, I just am gonna have a hard time voting for, uh, closing the court square on the eleventh of December because I know the reaction I'm gonna get from my merchants. There's no doubt about it. So.
Would it help if I went to the merchants and got them to sign a piece of paper saying they'd be for it? Cause I've already talked to a bunch of them and they seem to be fairly positive about it. I say that on the South Court side. I haven't gone to the North Court side and asked them.
Well, it impacts everybody because once you move traffic off one section, as we've heard through many, many movie productions that have come in, they just shifts to other areas.
Sure.
So.
There's only two retail merchants on the south side that I can remember, the, the record store and then that art store.
Corner of.
Yeah. Chad and Jason just are on the, the butt ends of, you know, the east and west side there with Ace and.
I mean, the east and west are where most of the merchants are.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a motion on the issue?
To do what?
Anything.
Right.
I'm looking for a vote.
Cause I, I was gonna suggest that we maybe look at, to Rose's point, looking at one that has fewer retail shops that may not be exactly on the square, but maybe a street off of the square. Um, I know at one point during, um, Taste of Newnan, we had a kids' section in one part that, you know, there's the library and the church there. And then I think there's only maybe one retail shop there, the bicycle shop on that street.
Bicycle shop two weeks before Christmas.
There's, there's also the matter of just personal responsibility. Again, if they're gonna give noodles, people, you know, personal responsibility to, to be responsible and take, take their own action as they deem necessary.
Yeah. I'm just trying to address the mayor's concern, which is the, the commerce part of it because people are gonna do what they wanna do. Um, I, I'm just concerned that it, to the mayor's point, that we take all of that parking over there and, and impede the traffic of people going around the square, um, that maybe we may have a, have a problem. So I, I'm just trying to think of things that have happened in the past to where we moved just slightly off the square, but still technically near the square.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I was just hoping that our past square experience would have been a positive one to show that there was kind of a proof of concept in place.
Yeah, just didn't do it around Christmas.
The other, the other consideration, it is a Friday night.
Sure.
So it's gonna get kind of traffic in that consideration.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's my concern. It's a Friday night, uh, so we're gonna have a lot of people downtown anyhow. And then when I read that there's, you're expecting three hundred people, uh, that's just my, that's my concern and the impact on what it does to the merchants.
Sure.
Greenville Street parks, I mean, it's a wonderful location. It's not that far to walk.
Jazz in the park usually does very well at Greenville Street.
What's that?
Is that a motion?
Are, are you willing to do Greenville Street Park?
Ye- yes, sir. I'm willing to do whatever you tell me to do.
I'll make that motion for Greenville Street Park to approve it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion for Greenville Street Park.
And I have a second. Uh, any further discussion on the issue? The, and the, the motion is to, uh, approve the event, uh, for Foundation Christian Church at Greenville Street Park on the December eleventh and the twelfth?
Thank you, sir.
Is that what you, what you had?
Yes, sir. It is.
Three, three to eleven on both days?
I think we've already booked the park for the full day on both days already, just in case this didn't go where we had hoped.
Okay. Um, motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate your service. Thank you. Uh, the next item is a motion to enter into executive session, but we're not gonna do that yet. Uh, do we have a young man from, yes, if you'll come back up? So have you found an answer for us?
I have. I just spoke with our operations folks and we are willing to commit, uh, keeping personnel at the front gate, um, and manning the tags and recording information of who goes in and out like we did previously. Um, we are also willing to give the chief access to our scanners, uh, that are at the clubhouse.
Okay. Hearing that information, I'm ready to, to motion to.
I'll make that motion that you.
And is that, I have a question though.
Oh, sure. I have a motion. Go ahead.
Is how long? I mean, are you gonna do that twenty-four hours or just doing that right to five?
Um, it would be as long as we have personnel on, on site. Um, I would think, sorry, I didn't clarify the, the times. I mean, twenty-four hours.